Good evening. I would like to call this Fridley School Board Tuesday, June 15th, meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I would accept a motion to accept the agenda with suggested motions and resolutions.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Thornton, seconded by Stark, to approve the agenda for June 15th, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will move on to our spotlight on recognition with the Employee of the Month, Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Evening Board Chair Perito and School Board members. It's with pleasure that I announce actually the Employees of the Month for June of 2021. Our Technology Department was unanimously decided to be our Employees of the Month. So our first one representing technology is Bill Bade. With increased use of Google Classroom, Bill was assigned the role of Google Administrator and quickly became the go-to person for any Google issues or needs. He was instrumental in rolling out the new Clever Dashboard that allows students to log into their Chromebooks, go to Clever Dashboard, and assess all of the district's software for learning, including Google Classroom and Edge Annuity. Our next tech member is Angela McShane. Throughout this chaotic school year, Angela has calmly and effortlessly supported several buildings and departments from the pre-K to the E-CSE to the high school and the ALC classrooms. In the spring, she played a key role in the distribution of BenQ boards, the new classroom technology to replace the smart boards, and also the Juno Sound Amplification Systems. Through her organization and planning, these were rolled out to all of the high school classrooms in a very short period of time. Our next technology member is Matthew Weber. Matthew has been actively involved in the distribution and support of Chromebooks for Fridley public school students. He works diligently to maintain the devices and ensure that all students have a working Chromebook in order to continue their learning, whether they were a distance learner or hybrid learner. He also works with students and families that are in need of hotspots for home networking capabilities and worked one-on-one with students and families to be sure that they were able to use this critical technology. Our next technology member is Donna Zilecki. Donna has played a key role in the Chromebook one-to-one program for our district. She maintains an inventory of all of the Chromebooks, cases, and power cords using our Destiny Resource Software. She assists all of our buildings in the process of labeling, checking out, and tracking of the devices for each and every one of our students. She also maintains the door unlock and lock schedules for all of our district buildings for the school day and after-school activities. The schedules allow students to enter the buildings while also ensuring doors are locked when needed to provide a safe and secure learning environment. Our next technology member is Tom Ferminger. Tom joined our technology team in January and hit the ground running. His knowledge and experience working with Chromebooks has been a huge advantage in that he is able to enroll, deploy, maintain, and repair students' Chromebooks. He took over the support of the elementary buildings and many other technology systems, including our wireless network, and is always willing to work on additional projects and assignments. Next, we have Nick Fletcher. In his role as Assistant Administrator, Nick ensures that all of our district's systems are up and running. This has been especially necessary with many students and staff working outside of our network and needing access to all of our systems. He maintains accounts for staff and students that are needed to assess any of our internal systems. He's also a member for all of the technology staff, excuse me, a mentor for all of the technology staff, and provides many opportunities for them to learn and grow in their skills. He has also played a key role in the implementation of Power BI, our new data dashboard system. And most of all is Yvonne Anderson. This incredible department is led by the one and only Yvonne Anderson. Yvonne is a strategic thinker who works hard to ensure our district stays on top of the latest technology in a fiscally responsible manner. So congratulations to our Fridley technology team for being Employees of the Month.
Next, I would like to share with our board. We are celebrating Anne Soysteadic at graduation of 2021. So this year, we celebrate 210 graduates. These students participated in graduation at Fridley High School football field this year on June 3rd, 2021. Among the 210 graduates, we had 16 full IB diploma candidates that completed six DP courses and examinations, three acknowledged courses and essay, 4,000-word independent extended essay, and participated in creativity, action, and service activities. We had 37 students in the IB Scholars Program that took at least four IBDP courses and examinations. We had six Presidential Education Awards of students who were receiving a 3.5 GPA and scored at or above the 80th percentile on their ACT or SAT. Two students graduating with their associate's degree. We had 27 students graduated with honors GPA of 3.25 to 3.49. We had 32 students graduate with high honors of GPA of 3.5 to 3.74. We had 31 students graduate with highest honors GPA of 3.75 and a minimum of three IBDP courses and examinations. Congratulations to the fabulous class of 2021, and we wish them only the best in the future. And last but not least, we have our celebrations for our preschool, 4th, and 8th grades. So this year, our preschool graduates celebrated with their parents and teachers as they graduated for the future class. Get ready for this, 2034. 4th graders celebrated with Jack the Giraffe. Outsiders, they will move to Fridley Middle School next year. 4th graders at Stevenson celebrated their graduation outside as well with teachers and friends before they moved to Fridley Middle School in the fall. Our 8th graders gathered with friends and teachers at Commons Park on the final day of school, and they will enter Fridley High School as the class of 2025 in the fall. ALC celebrated graduates in a small ceremony at Fridley Community Center. Congratulations on their hard work and perseverance towards graduation. And Fridley High School class of 2021 held their commencement ceremony at the Fridley High School football field on a beautiful night in June. So congratulations to the class of 2021 and all of the Fridley students for their hard work during this unprecedented year of learning.
Wow. Yeah. Definitely earn a round of applause for that. Next, we will move on to superintendent and staff reports, beginning with the 2022 budget presentation for Ms. Reisler.
Thank you, Board Chair Perito, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Tonight, I will just go through the budget presentation to give you information for the adopted fiscal year 22 budget. So going through the budget presentation then, again, the budget assumptions always begin with enrollment, and we talk about our average daily membership and our pupil units. And the pupil units, again, are a weighted mechanism in which we are able to understand some of our revenues that we will be receiving based on either an actual student count or based on that pupil unit weighted factor. Different revenue streams that we have, of course, then are those based on the kids that we have, as well as federal, state, and then local miscellaneous needs. So general fund revenue overall, because the legislature has not decided yet on funding for E-12 education finance, we have assumed a 0% increase for FY22 as far as the general ed formula is concerned. We purposefully wanted to be very conservative to not overstate revenues. Also, any categorical area such as the gifted and talented, staff development, learning and development, et cetera, we are using the existing factors as of today in feeling very comfortable that they most likely will not change. Other revenues then, we do have our known revenue projections. Some of these are based on past year data, such as our tax levy revenue. I'm wondering, should I be forwarding this? Oh, there we go. So we have our tax levy revenue based on the taxes payable 2021. That does generate FY22 revenue. Some of our aids are based on past year student data, such as compensatory as well as QComp, and so we are aware of what those are going to be. Unknown estimated revenues fall in the areas of things such as special education, federal revenues, local revenues, when the funding needed may be different than the expenditures that we're experiencing. The budget assumptions then used in the expenses area, we have our salaries, benefits, and that makes up about 73% of our general fund budget. Our purchase services, some of these will have a flat percentage. Some of them will be higher based on what they are. So purchase services includes things such as contractors, attorneys, auditors, as well as utilities and those different kinds of costs. We have our supplies then, meaning instructional and non-instructional or general type of supplies, as well as equipment and any other areas that we may have. So the assumptions then for the salaries and benefits, we do a projection of the steps and lane movement for any contract or bargaining group that we have, as well as potential for contract settlements. And then we have our non-people costs, and those are things such as any lease agreement that we have, which is where a lot of our, like, copiers and some equipment type of things are, where they're housed. Our utilities, usually that's a slightly higher projection just because of costs, as we know that, as an example, natural gas is going to be a little bit higher. Our insurance rates have been renewed now. This was actually a really good area. Our insurances actually came in a little bit lower than what we thought they would for an increase. However, cyber insurance really was quite an increase. And then we also have our contracted costs such as transportation. The next slide shows our enrollment projection and what the enrollment history has been and what our trend is looking like at this time. So as of today, if you will, we are projecting to have about 2,834 students in K through 12. That will be included then when we're making those projections. So we did have a high year of 2017, and we have had slight decreases since then, except for the little bump up that we had in 2020. But we have been on a trend of decreasing enrollment. It is important to note that many districts saw a decrease in 2021 going into 2022 because of the pandemic. So this is something that is not unique to Fridley. The information then on the next slide talks about the general fund adopted budget, the proposed adopted budget. And the way to read this chart is basically the column that says beginning fund balance, that's the assumption of what we will look like with, after the audit. So after the audit of our fiscal year 21 data is complete, this is what we're looking to see in the different funds of the general fund. Then we have the draft adopted budget for our revenues, expenditures, and then what's that plus or minus for fund balance usage or fund balance increase, and then what would the ending balance look like at the end of next fiscal year of 2022. In the unassigned area, we are showing a slight decrease. And again, it's important to note that we are not including any type of an increase on the general ed formula. And so if the legislature does decide to put something in for '22, that will obviously affect this. The rest of the non-spendables, again, that's like your inventory and those different kinds of things are assigned categories, and then we also have the restricted categoricals. What's important to note on this slide is that we are assuming that we will have about 7.39% of unassigned fund balance when comparing that to the expenditures, and that is hitting the mark of what the board has decided, what's in our policy as a fund balance target. So we need to be between 7% to 10% to meet the policy that our board has set, and this budget shows us hitting that mark. The next slide is just a pie chart that describes how our revenues are received, and so we have the vast majority of our revenues coming in as state aid. We do get federal grants and federal dollars coming in either as a flow-through or for particular programs, and then the rest is local, meaning levies and miscellaneous kind of things such as registration fees or gate receipts and those kinds of things. The expenditure by type then is by a specific object area, meaning is it a salary, is it a benefit, is it a purchase service? And so this just gives a breakdown, a quick visual of what that breakdown looks like. And again, the vast majority of our dollars are spent on people. So 73% of our general fund budget is on staff and those directly working with kids and those different areas of administration and supports. The next slide shows then a quick visual of how much money is spent from the general fund to directly support students. And so what you're seeing here is that breakdown of 78% is direct support of students. So that's our teachers, Paris, transportation, technology, all of those areas. 5% is from the district's support services, such as like any of the business services, HR, community relations, technology, admin, those different areas. Our sites, buildings, and others, 12%, and that is any type of operations and maintenance. And then we also have 5% on administration, and that includes any of those in admin. And it's important to note that we have one of the lower administrative costs per district in the area. The last slide then shows the other funds, and so that includes our food service, where we are expecting to end the year on a very positive note for fiscal year '21, as well as an increase in fiscal year '22. The community education, we do have different restricted balances. In this particular, this particular fund, we are expecting to break even for fiscal year '22, and the Community Education Director does have a really good plan in place as far as how to get us from where we are to where we need to be. And to note that this is very common for all school districts in Minnesota, that their community ed really took a hit because of the pandemic. So it's really important to remember that community ed is really driven by programs and, you know, rentals and those different kinds of things that we were simply not able to offer during the pandemic. Our capital projects fund is for our big projects, our big construction sort of things, and maintenance and operations areas. The debt service, we do have general debt service. We have bonds for projects that, construction that we've done, as well as OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. When that first came into play, we did sell bonds for that, so we do have debt service in that particular area. Our internal services funds is made up of our health and dental self-insured plans, and we are expected to have a slight decrease in that fund balance, but yet it's at a very healthy place. And the really good news with that one is that we were able to have a 0% increase in premiums for our staff. And then we have our trust and agency funds, and again, that one is slated to go down slightly, but still sitting at a very healthy fund balance for the end of FY22.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. To you and your team, I think you guys have done a tremendous job, and we really appreciate how great you're done with the budget and keeping us within that fund balance. That's a wonderful job. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 budget?
So moved.
Second.
They always fight about good stuff. Motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to approve the 2021-2022 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that passes. You can come right back up.
I shouldn't sit down.
No, don't sit down. We're going to talk about the community center parking lot construction.
Yes, thank you, Board Chair Perito. So what we are asking for tonight is acceptance of the bid for construction of the Fridley Community Center parking lot project and award the contract to Veet and Company with a bid amount of $331,595. Again, these bids were, we did an approval for sealed bids advertisement. The bids came in on June 9th. They were opened at 10:00 a.m., and then we did have Design Tree and Engineering Company go through all the bids to ensure that they were appropriate and matched all the criteria that we had, and also there were no errors or omissions from the bids received. So the recommendation from our engineer, as well as from Brian Brown, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, is to go with Veet and Company for this particular project.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the FCC parking lot construction?
Motion moved.
Give it to Abdi. I'll second.
All right. We have motion by Adams, seconded by Carnap, to approve the FCC parking lot construction reconfiguration project bid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. And are you on again? You are. Just hang out with us tonight. So Ms. Reisler, please continue.
Okay, so the next item is a resolution for the approval of the Northeast Metro Intermediate School District's 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. The information that you have before you talks about the breakdown of the member school districts of 916 and what Fridley's portion is. So basically, 916 is an intermediate school district, thus they have no tax levying authority, and so they ask that their member districts, on their behalf, use a flow-through levy to provide the taxpayer dollars necessary for their long-term facilities maintenance plan. The Northeast Metro's annual amount is $142,000, and Fridley's portion of that is $3,503.33. So there is a resolution then for the board to approve that flow-through amount.
Thank you. So since this is a resolution, I will be actually reading it. So the resolution is the approval of Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Budget and authorizing the inclusion of the appropriate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facilities maintenance review, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 14, State of Minnesota, as follows. "The School Board of Northeast Metro 916 has approved a long-term facilities maintenance budget for its facilities for the 2022-2023 school year, payable in 2022 levy in the amount of $142,000. The various components of this program budget are attached as Exhibit A. Here too and are incorporated herein by reference, said budget is hereby approved." And this is Minnesota Statute, Section 123B.53, subdivision 1, as amended, provides that if an intermediate school district's budget is approved by the School Boards of each of the intermediate school district's member school districts, each member district may include its pro-proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The share of the cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each member school district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate, where half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district, and half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of ADM utilization by district to the total ADM utilization." Ross, I'm sure this makes perfect sense to you. "The inclusion of this pro-proportionate share of the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for the fiscal year 2022 is hereby approved, subject to the approval of the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education. Upon receipt of the pro-proportionate share of the long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds." Who wants to approve that?
I'm moved. Prove it.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Perito, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any discussion? Yay! All right, that was fabulous. Now, I would entertain a motion to approve, for approval, to have a November 2021 bond referendum ballot question to address adding 5th grade to the elementary sites. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion by Stark, seconded by Carnap, to approve and to have a November 2021 bond referendum ballot question to addressing adding 5th grade to the elementary sites. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Perito, nay. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Nay.
And with more than the majority, that passes. And moving on, we are grateful to be accepting gifts. We get gifts throughout the community for all the, for the schools. So whereas the School Board Policy 706 establishes certain guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the School Board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. So Stevenson received a total of $436.90 from St. Edward, the Confessor Church, and Benevity Community Impact Fund. And we will make a motion to thank the gifts and, or thank the donors and accept the gifts.
Motion moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Adams, seconded by Thornton, to accept the gifts and thank the donors. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Perito, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Any discussion? And that passes. We have another resolution. You want to read this time? Resolution. Okay, we have a resolution for the renewal of the membership in the Minnesota High School League. Be it resolved that the governing board of the school district number 14, County of Anoka, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, regulation of interscholastic, athletic, and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota Statute, Section 128(c).01 to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the Fridley High School is authorizing by this the governing board of said school district to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved inner-school activities sponsored by said league and in its various subdivisions. Further resolved that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook. On file at the office- latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities. And that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified in this governing board. And is there a motion to pass the resolution to approve and renew the membership?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meisner and seconded by Stark. And we will call the roll since it is a resolution. Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Mr. Carnap?
Aye.
Mr. Meisner?
Aye.
Ms. Perito, aye. Ms. Stark?
Aye.
And Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Any discussion? And that passes. Next, we are going to move on. Ms. Laura Seifert-Hurtling, please come on down.
Good evening, Board Chair Perito, members of the School Board, Superintendent Dr. Hile. Tonight I have three policies that were on the agenda for second reading. During the work session, we were given additional direction to reorder some of the areas of five oh six student discipline, so we will bring that back to you next month. But I am presenting to you five fourteen, the bullying policy, and six sixteen, the school district accountability system, for a second reading and for your adoption this evening.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions? And would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, seconded by Carnap, to approve the second reading and adoption of policies five oh six, five fourteen, six sixteen. And we will have Ms. Reisler come up and do the last motion, and then we will officially approve it.
Thank you, Board Chair Perito, board members and Superintendent Dr. Hile. This is the second reading of Policy eight zero six, Crisis Management Policy. Since the first reading, there have been no changes to this, and so we are seeking approval of the second reading.
Thank you. So we'll just continue on. We had a motion by Stark and then seconded by, was it Carnap? By Mr. Carnap. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? And that passes. Next, we move on to our consent agenda, which is to approve the consent agenda. Routine action items include minutes of the school board meeting and the work session that was held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the work session that was held on June first. Our monthly financial reports, our new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, retirements. Our Q comp report, student-parent handbook for the 2021-2022 school year, and the Fridley High School band overnight trip to California coming up in March 2022. And do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, seconded by Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion? And that passes. Next, we're going to move on to reports from our school board members. Should we start with the joint powers? Oh. Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I was, yeah, we're forgetting. We can't forget. First reading of policies.
All right, good evening again, Board Chair Perito, members of the School Board, Superintendent Dr. Hile. So tonight I have the first readings of two different policies. The first policy is Policy four nineteen, the tobacco-free environment policy. And there are just a few changes to this policy for the first reading. Part of it is expanding the language for tobacco and what those devices are. So that's one change. Another change is the addition of some instruction, vaping prevention instruction. We know that with the Minnesota Student Survey, that was done a couple of years ago, that that was an area of need for students at the middle school. So that is also added to that policy. So that is, those are the additions for Policy four nineteen. I also have Policy five sixteen, which is student medication. And there are also been some changes to that policy. The first one discusses the storing of medication within our school buildings. Another change is there's information regarding secondary students and non-prescription medication that has been added. There's also added language for sunscreen. We used to have to get parent permission to put sunscreen on students, and now it's saying student may possess that sunscreen during the school day while on property without that prescription or a physician's note. There's also an area that discusses the definition of a parent. As an eighteen-year-old student, they're their own parent, just for this policy. We know that that's not always true. There's also just some language around EpiPens, that the school may possess EpiPens in, in the case that there is a need. And then there's also been some added language for procedures for unclaimed drugs within the schools. And the addition of that isn't a new procedure for us, but it did come up on MSBA and the policy, so we have added that to our policy also.
Wonderful, thank you. And we do have Dr. Bodie almost got missed twice tonight. I'm so sorry. Welcome, please come talk to us about district curriculum and instruction.
Yes, good evening, Board Chair Perito, board members and Superintendent Dr. Hile. Here to present first reading of Policy six oh one, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. Just a few changes to this policy as well. First one on page two is just updating some language. It was still referencing the No Child Left Behind Act, so just updating that language there. Other policies or other updates would be on pages six through seven primarily, adding areas four through seven, which include, area four includes creating an annual report to the Commissioner of Ed regarding our efforts to screen and identify students who demonstrate characteristics of dyslexia. Area five is identifying, or if we identify students who have reading difficulty, we must provide them with alternative instruction under Minnesota statute. Area six is regarding the school district giving parents of each student who are, who are not reading at or above grade level timely information regarding that. And area seven is about students who are not reading at or above grade level, that the school district shall provide reading intervention to accelerate that growth. And if they are not reading at or above by grade three, we would continue to provide reading intervention until they're reading at grade level. So those are the primary changes.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions? No? You're good. Now we can move on to reports from school board members. So we will start with Mr. Adam.
The Northwest Suburban Integration School District meeting was held on May nineteenth, and it covered reports, staff reports on magnet school lottery, as well as financial reports that included high school grant and federal grant updates. Also, there was the executive director report about giving voice leadership conference that was held virtually on May fifth. And also the step-up summer program that's having a conference that's going on June fourteenth to seventeenth, so it's going on right now. And also the joint working group also had a meeting, and we there discussed the budget for, for the 2021-22 school year, as well as the employee benefits for May agenda. Some discussion and approval items included health insurance benefits, staff contracts, and the calendar for the Suburban Integration School District. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Carnap, if you would like to tell us about AMSD?
Sure, thanks, Board Chair. We met on May twenty-first. The AMSD board is in good financial shape. They're about three thousand dollars under budget. That's normally, or it's going to be attributed to the pandemic. There was some discussion or some updates on the page amendment. There was a new version introduced in the Senate that added language to pacify some private schools and their rights. However, that will likely not be dealt with this year. And then most of the discussion surrounded the budget, the state budget where we're at in the special session. Of note, I thought it was interesting that seven out of ten budget sessions do go into an extra session. Right now, it appears, there certainly may have been some updates, so Dr. Hile, if you want to jump in, please do, that there's a global budget deal. However, the specifics of where the money's going to go and be spent is, still needs to be ironed out. And there seems to be a disagreement on the two-point-eight-billion-dollar rescue act monies that are coming into the state of Minnesota. That was pretty much the gist of it, but Dr. Hile, if you have anything? Okay. All right, cool. I passed.
Awesome. With flying colors. All right, schools for equity in education. Ms. Thornton?
Okay, thank you. We met on May twenty-seventh, and as everyone been talking about, the session wrap-up with MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education was postponed because, of course, we're waiting on that education bill. So anyway, we had Dan Schuman, who's the lead attorney for the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit on school segregation. The two thousand and fifteen Cruz-Guzman lawsuit asserts that Minnesota's laws and rules have created a segregated school system that denies minority students an adequate education. The case has been in court-ordered mediation for the past two, almost two years now, and if there's no legislative solution, the case will be in trial in July of 2022. Of course, the pandemic has pushed things back. So plans for participating school district requires them to focus on culturally responsive teaching, student academic achievement, integration, and inclusion. Identifiable schools is when a school has more than eighty percent of the students in the school are historically underserved students. So look for more to come later with this lawsuit as it continues later down the line.
Thank you so much. And last, but definitely not least, nine sixteen Northeast Metro, Ms. Stark, please.
We met on June second. We had a presentation from outgoing Superintendent Hayes. She shared regarding the equity work in the district, the history of it, the work that's currently being done with the Center for Educational Leadership, and the direction she anticipates it going in the future. She shared the greatest opportunity for an equity-driven school district is alignment, bottom to top and top to bottom, through the leadership of the superintendent. Superintendent Hayes knows that Dr. Bow embraces this belief and that she, as well as the cabinet, will further this work and do great work for the district in the future. Superintendent Hayes sees a lot of opportunities for the district to collaborate on this work and that she believes the success of equity work is unique to each of us. So it was her final meeting, and Dr. Val Rabel is the incoming superintendent. We also approved the joint powers agreement with Century College. We went through the fiscal year 2022 preliminary budget. We approved food service agreements, the collaborative transportation management services, so we approved a one-year contract extension with them. We approved the matrix communications quote, and then we also went over a cyber policy renewal change. So we approved a change of carrier for a, it's a slightly better premium. And then we went over insurance renewals. So we also had, St. Francis is no longer going to be a member of nine sixteen, and it was their final meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. That concludes the school board meeting. Our important future upcoming dates are the next Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Meeting is going to be on June sixteenth. Our next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting is going to be on July twentieth with our work session at five-thirty, open forum at seven, and business meeting at seven-thirty, right here at the Fridley Community Center. The next Fridley School Board Work Session is going to be August third with the work session at five-thirty. And that concludes our meeting. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Thornton, seconded by Stark to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. We are done, it closed at eight-fourteen. Thank you so much.